1:30. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved. So moved.
First by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Six to zero with Dixie out of the room. Okay.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5P resolution authorizing termination of single project agreement with Thompson Engineering regarding the Cedar Lake Bridge. We are removing 5Y resolution authorizing copy agreement with RJ Young for the police department.
So moved. Add amended.
Second. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six to zero. All right. We'll now move to our presentation agenda. Mr. Gillich?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody. It's May, right? And we're back. So we've had some good numbers and, you know, reason for optimism. And we'll update to you on some things that are happening. We have a state of the city coming up on Thursday. We have some interesting numbers to reveal. So if you don't have your table, get your table. But anyway, it's something that the Bay does every year for us. But, you know, to add to it, you could just feel it in February, in March, and April. And we hope that we have this thing in our rearview mirror. And it's good to be able to see and smile and talk and understand what everybody's, you know, feeling. And I think with that, that concludes my report.
All right. We don't have any departmental reports, so we'll start with our council reports. Start with Mr. Lawrence. I'm sorry.
I'd like to take just a minute and introduce our new assistant chief.
Okay, yes.
Chris is gonna do good things. The mayor gave me open office yesterday. So that's a pleasure.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
We watched Paul's council meeting. He did a heck of a job dealing with the same two people there for 35 minutes, asking the same questions over and over again, over and over. But you kept your cool, and you answered their question. And they asked you again, you answered the question again. So obviously, you're gonna be a good assistant chief. Welcome aboard. Thank you. We're not finished. That's just the beginning.
Your time's up.
Finally, finally. My time, my time, we've got 20 more years. I've got plenty of time. 367 Forest is finally coming down after all these years of fighting and putting up with other things. Those people around the street are extremely happy. They're taking down the back part. Now, soon as we do that, then we're gonna start the front part. So whatever Jerry Krill's gotta do, it's time for him to get moving. If we gotta do something today, Jay, let me know, 'cause it's time to take that and level that piece of land. Period. All right, so. Next thing there, Peter's awake. All right, give me an update on Switman House. I know y'all met with the mayor and the governors and everybody in the state. I know you already did all this, did you?
Yeah, the state has shown some interest. We just have to, we're kinda going to the next step of them having someone come down and look at the property and assess it. And so that's in progress. As far as the Kiesel Circle, I can cover that too. All right. The property owner has agreed that they will donate it, but they don't, they don't get control of the property until August. So they said they will, once they get control of the property through the tax sale, they're agreeable to donating that property to the city.
So, I mean, is it possible that we could turn it into a small park or a dog park? Are you planning on selling the property to the people living around it? You'd rather turn it into a park? It'd be better for that neighborhood. Could you actually sell the property if you wanted to, say, one of the neighbors wanted to buy it?
I don't know if it would really meet any of the, the building requirements as far as the size of lot.
The people in there said if you would, if they could take the park over, they'd maintain the park.
Yeah, I think the city could donate it to, I don't know if they have a homeowners association, but we could, we could work that up as far as a use agreement if the, if those citizens would take it over.
You know, like you said, 20 by 200.
That'd be a very good idea.
Might be good for anything else, you know? And they spoke about redoing the house. They had 1263 instead of 10 to down. Somebody bought to redo it, so that's gonna be a good thing. That'd be cleaning up that neighborhood also. So that's, that's another good thing.
If that street has a person sort of in charge of, of the neighborhood, you know, if you'll put me in touch with that person, I'll, I'll start coordinating with them for when the property can be turned over.
All right. And the lights on Forest Avenue Pier, Michael, the big lights are not on? All the lights at Forest Avenue Pier working or not working?
Forest Avenue Pier.
Forest, Forest Avenue.
Forest Avenue is the pier that, as you recall, Mayor.
Yeah, this is Forest Avenue Pier where we used to swim.
Say again?
You recall that that's the one where they stole, that somebody stole all the, stole the lights?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was over a year ago. So what we doing since then, nothing? The people down there wanna know if they put up the big lights, like for the trout fishing, they wanna put the lights for the pier itself?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure of the status on those lights. And, but I think the pier has been rebuilt, Bill Ray. As far as all the wood. I'm not sure of the status of the electricity, but we'll, we'll get a handle on that. But, you know, the, the baby boardwalk is, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can with that situation, even at the base of the Forest Avenue Pier with some rocks. So we'll look at that as far as the lighting of that pier.
That's some, that's some of the main concern. They, they're right, it's time of the year. Everybody wants to go out on the pier, go fishing off the pier, whatever. They wanna make sure the lights are all available.
Did you ever notice that no pelicans land on that pier?
Say again?
No pelicans stay on that pier.
That's not good.
That, that's the truth.
A pelican won't land, that's not a good thing. The other one, they wanna know where we, as far as the lighthouse pier itself.
We're in a design mode right now.
Are we gonna take down what was there and?
We're in a design mode right now. We don't know what we're gonna do with the pilings, but, you know, there'll be some.
We're not gonna build it back the same way.
We're not gonna build back the same way. That's true.
Right, you need to build it higher.
Well, it may be high, maybe not be high, but it's not gonna be built back with the same vulnerability.
Tom Fofo just didn't get it. So let's do it the right. I know you don't want it to build back the way it was, so we got to build it up.
Yeah, we've gotten clearance from MEMA and FEMA indirectly in that we have some additional funds that we can drop in instead of just rebuilding it like it was. So we're, you know, we're in a mode, we see what the best solution is, whether it's a growing or whether it's, you know, the flow-through decking, and maybe all of the above. But, you know, my idea is that if you look at the lateral drift that happens just a little bit to the west side, you see how thick that, that sand is on that thing? Well, it's about 20 feet on the other side. So whatever we do to that pier, it's gonna stop sand from moving east to west. And that's big on our agenda, whether it's a growing or it's a, you know, some other function to, to help that in addition to protect the pier and the wave action.
To protect the pier, you gotta build it higher. You gotta change the power.
Not necessarily.
And you gotta build it higher, gotta build it concrete. Otherwise, we're gonna keep doing this. This is the fourth time.
Not necessarily.
So, I mean, it's the same thing over and over. You're just wasting money putting it back the same way it was.
You know, it won't be back the same way.
It needs to be concrete and higher. I mean, that's pretty much, everybody knows that, and you have to know that.
Well, we've, we've got three engineering firms that have responded to our requests for proposals and ideas. We're trying to evaluate which is the best that would do what you're saying, not have to rebuild it every time there's a 10-foot surge.
Yeah, me and the small hurricanes take it down. So that's not working the way it is. And the pier's used a lot. I mean, you know, what we're gonna do is let's do a way to last through the hurricane, high in concrete, the way you have to do it. Costs us money, and we have to go after the money.
I agree.
Have we attached anything to the Pop Ferry Bridge as far as, like, attacking the money that's out there? There's tons of money out there.
We've, we've had a number of visits to the state, MDOT, to the governor's infrastructure planning group with that in mind. That's, you know, everyone recognizes, it's higher on MDOT's list that they recognize there's too much riding on, on the Pop Ferry Bridge. And other than that, you know, we're keeping it high, you know, on their, their, our list for them to, to react to.
Yeah, but I mean, you talk.
That's now a $150 million project.
Homeland Security should have a ton of money to use that as an evacuation route. I mean, it needs to be, that needs to be put up pretty much like the, the Buckter Bridge on Ocean Springs. That's what you need, you have no drawbridge, no stoppers. I mean, you have to go after the money and get it. The money has to be out there. Everybody, brother, trying to give us money. Let's go get it.
That's what we've been trying.
All right. Thank you. Hello?
Sure you don't have anything else?
Well, I'm not finished, but just go ahead.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. President. By the way, I like that new cut. At least they have one in the 80s. I wanna congratulate, congratulate the assistant chiefs. Welcome aboard, and we know you're gonna do great, great things. I also wanted to thank Bill Ray for putting up those signs, Bill Ray and the chief, on Dewey Circle and State Street. I mean, they, they were just ramped and rave, and I had to sit out there about 45 minutes to listen to how great that, you know, stop sign was. So thank you, guys, for taking care of that for me. And other than that, where are we on, do we have street sweepers? Are we still contracting out street sweepers?
We don't, no, no, councilman, we do not own, haven't for many years owned a street sweeper. We count, we, we contract that out, we get a schedule, that's, we put that schedule on the city website. I can have it sent to you. Changes, you know, every week.
Okay, okay.
You know, we, we don't do a lot of sweeping north of the Bay.
Gotcha.
I've talked about why that is. It's because the street sweeper is a street sweeper, not a road sweeper.
Right.
And, and it only functions efficiently when there's a curb and gutter.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was going, is for, you know, a rundown divisionary later on down, down the road, so.
I'll pull the existing schedule and send it to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Ms. Niman? I can't remember your name. Mr. Demme?
Better men than you have forgotten my name. I don't even know if that made sense. The piers on the causeway, do we have any update on the decision for retaining, repairing? Have we gotten any further on that?
We, we've submitted a FEMA package. But we don't have any plans to do the demo on our own at this point. I mean, the, the mayor's plan on this is to demo the areas, the eye, the parts that are, that have fallen over in the water, and just to make it safe and move on.
Well, we, we talked about doing different style piers, or, no, we did talk about removing some of them because we have a high inventory of piers in that one area, but did we, have we gotten any further on updating or correcting the pier structures that are gonna be retained?
Our challenge is, is to remove those structures that have fallen over. There's some things we can do immediately with the, you know, the shelters on the highway that, on the roadway that should be, you know, high on our list, and what we can do, you know, in our own, in force account kind of stuff. But the challenge is to get equipment to remove those pilings that are laid, you know, are over, and then actually salvage or, or keep it from, you know, being a hazard by removing or fencing up or cutting off what's, what remains. We're, we haven't really gotten into a bid situation, but we, we have got an idea of what we need to do as fast as we can.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a resident that asked me about the wood, if, when we demo those fallen-over piers. Any opportunity for a resident to reclaim that wood?
Well, you know, reclaim, reclaimed a lot of that was on Highway 90, specifically the lighthouse pier. Put it on, you know, in, on our property on Oak Street. I'm sure that'd be part of the plan. We had a contractor pull that stuff up, and if we have the ability to pull it up, we'll be able to probably, you know, use it ourself. I mean, I don't know, you know, what the law would read on, on stacking up a pile of, you know, treated wood and what, but, you know, we certainly could use it, you know, and that may be part of the, the contract that we would, you know, enter into with a contractor to remove the wood and bring it to our facility, if it's, if it's usable.
Thank you.
It might be a useful time for me to give you an update on how much FEMA money we've gotten? None.
That was a quick update.
But it's supposedly, 2.9 has been approved from the initial bunch. Okay.
Mike, the, or, excuse me, Mr. Leonard, have you had a chance to go out to Linwood and look at the pole? I took a couple pictures, I'll forward them over to you, but it appears at the pole that the light is on, are you familiar with what I'm referring to? The, the resident's been paying for the security light, and he's asking the city to take over the, the cost of that street light, and it's actually, it looks like it is on a city pole or a power company pole. It's got a transformer on top and power lines running to and from it. So have you had a chance to get out there and look at it yet?
I, I haven't, don't think I need to. I think we just need the contractor to go look at it, and that's why we gave him that, that address.
Okay, so that's in, in the works, then?
They've usually, pretty quickly. I'm surprised it's, hadn't been fixed yet.
All right, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you. Just a reminder to residents that if you're having a contractor remove trees or rehabbing your home or structures on your property, remember, part of that contractor's service is to haul away that waste or debris. This has come up a few times in the last month in, in my ward. I'm sure it's no different in other wards. And of course, the, you know, some folks say, "Well, I'm a do-it-yourself kind of guy." Well, if the contractor's vehicle is parked in your front yard or in front of your house, and there's a pile of waste from, you know, rehabbing or renovating your kitchen, then Pelican Waste is not, not gonna haul that off. And at that point, you have two choices. One is you can pay somebody to haul it off yourself, or maybe you call Public Works. But I'm thinking Public Works isn't in the business, really, of hauling this kind of waste off either. I mean, the whole point is, these contractors should be removing what's coming out of your home or what trees are being cut on your property. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the way it works. And, and if you want to, you know, everybody can do their bit to save the city some money here, because if Public Works eventually has to go out and do that, I, I don't know if the city can ding people on their property taxes for picking that up, or whether it is, in fact, under some circumstances, something that Public Works could haul off. But the point is, for the majority of the piles of debris or waste in front of homes, if it's put out there by a tree contractor or it's put out there by a home contractor, then those contractors should be hauling off that waste. So I know, I know there can be some gray areas there, but really, for the most part, it's just if you hire somebody to remove a tree, they, they have to haul it off. Same thing.
Well said, councilman. Thanks for that. We, we just got a couple of these little gravel trucks, and, you know, we can't, we can't be everybody's solution. If a contractor is doing work at your house, or if you're doing work at your house and you've got construction material and debris, or if a tree has been taken out, absolutely that those contractors should be removing those. We, we, we have too many people in the city who are just hauling all their junk out to the corner, and then they, then they do the Pontius Pilate thing. It's not their problem anymore. And, and, and we, we just can't be every, the solution to everybody's waste problem.
Well, and, and.
Yeah, that's another one that we've talked about, is that the Pelican Waste, as well as Waste Management, when they bid these contracts, they bid the number of residences. They didn't count vacant lots. So some people have a habit of taking their debris, instead of putting it in front of their house, they'll put it next to, next door in front of a vacant lot, and Pelican or Waste Management will not haul it away.
Or in the city's right-of-way, across the street, in which case, it's just gonna sit there, then folks complain that it's an eyesore or continues to gather debris. And eventually, the city's, and it's costly to do this. You're taking a crew off whatever they usually do. It's a small thing, but a significant thing. Thank you. The, the only other comment I'd like to make is congratulations to Chief. Say, say your last name for me. Chris. D. Back? Did I say that properly? D. Back? Okay, anyway, I've known him for a number of years. He worked out at Biloxi High School before the school district had resource officers, if I remember correctly, and just did an excellent job. So I've known him for quite a few years. I think he's an excellent choice, Chief. Thank you very much. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to congratulate Assistant Chief D. Back. If that applause is any indication, it sounds like you're the right man for the job. You got a lot to live up to, that, that big applause that you got. So congratulations. Also, I'd like to get an update on the Waters View issue. I know that we had a contractor that was interested. Is that still in the works?
Actually, a PO, a purchase order was issued, and they're just looking for a break in the weather.
Okay.
They'll be coming in from the water side, and they've got a, a vehicle they call the Marsh Master. It's kind of a reptilian, you know, and it was on. It's news break here. It was out there today. So I guess they did get started.
That is good news. I know it, we've been talking about it in several of these meetings, so thank you so much for that support. Look forward to that. Maybe, maybe we can set a precedence for some other areas as well. The other thing I wanna talk about, I know it's on the agenda for some repairs and reinforcement of the Cedar Lake Bridge, and that's a good thing to reinforce any of our bridges that are in jeopardy of possibly failing. But I just wanna give an update on the Cedar Lake discussions. I've talked to Lieutenant Governor Housman, I've talked to State Representative Zuber, State Senator Delano, several of the Board of Supervisors, my colleagues, a few colleagues on the council here, and more importantly, the citizens that recognize that that bridge, we need to replace it. And if we have a significant amount of funds for infrastructure coming down, and we can earmark and carve something out for a long-term capital project, I'm not saying tomorrow, but if we can identify and put that on a capital project list to cure that once and for all for the next 100 years, that would be a good thing. This is an evacuation route. This is a safety issue to get emergency vehicles coming to the north, going to the south, over that bridge. It's well noted that it floods on both sides, so even if we reinforce the bridge, we're in jeopardy because of the flooding on each side of the bridge. That reinforcement really won't do any good if, if they can't get through the floodwaters. So I just wanna point that out in, in my council report today, that we put that on the radar and maybe scope out a capital list, whether it's funded or not, at least get that on the capital list in the future. And then last, I just wanna recognize the passing of Mr. Gwad, one of our seafood leaders, and I can't say enough of his contributions to the success of the coast, and I'd ask everybody if we could close this meeting in memory of Mr. Gwad. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. I just have a couple of things. I drove up by Shriners today, where they're doing the, the work, and it looks like they're almost ready to open it up. I think maybe a few more days of that settling and another coat of pavement, maybe, and it'll be, but it looks really good, and I think that's gonna make a major difference, especially once we get those easements to the east of that cleaned out. And then I've gotten an email from you. You said that they had start, started paving Wool Market Lake as well as Chireen, and then that you, that there was an order in for Old Wool Market Road as well. Is that the entire road or just portions, or what?
The Wool Market Road is a sections, just the bad sections right now.
Old Wool Market?
Old Wool Market Road.
Okay.
They, they were marked, and I was told they were, they were starting.
Okay, good deal. All right, and then the, the only other thing I have is in reference to ordinance 4A. It'll be a first reading today. Whenever this comes, at this point, this is just, the first and second reading will basically just be so that the developer can go forward with doing a study to see what can be built on the property, the drainage study and things of that nature. And I plan to call for a public hearing before the council for the residents, once we get to the point to where we know exactly what they can do on that property, so that the residents in that area can voice their concerns to the council. And when this comes up, Mr. Krill, we move it today. If you would come and explain the process of if something isn't built on here, it reverting back in just the, the legal terms of it, and that's all I have.
Mr. President, I had one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention something very important. The city working with Beverly Martin with Circle Park, she did, rebuilt the pavilion, finally got the tenements, put the top on. She moved a basketball goal from the street around to the west side, so the ball, when they shoot the baskets and they miss it, it don't go on the street, goes in the yard. So she did those two things this week. So I wanna thank her. She's always good to work with it, Beverly Martin, with the city. So that's a good thing that you had that kind of relationship with the supervisor. So I just wanna make sure we thank her for what she did already in Circle Park. Thank you. And the last thing, come the playground equipment that we've been waiting for, it's supposed to be that tomorrow to put it up. That's what they said. So once again, they delaying this once, every, every once in a while, but that's them shipping it. But it's supposed to be brought in tomorrow at Circle Park and put up tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, now move to citizen comments. We'll have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person will have three minutes. Whenever you speak, please come forward, sign in at the table, and speak your name clearly. Is anyone on my left side of the room, your right side of the room, that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. I just had two brief points I wanted to make. One is, I'm here on behalf of the Simon.
Mr. Stifle, if you will, please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dennis Stifle. My address is 13061 Shriners Boulevard, Suite C. I just wanted to mention two things briefly. One is that I'm here on behalf of the Simon Property Development. If y'all have any questions, not sure if that's gonna go in that direction today, but I'm here if you have any questions. The second thing, just briefly, I wanted to thank personally and publicly Mayor Fofo Gillich and his administration and the council, especially Nathan Barrett, for the effort and thought that has gone into the Shriners Boulevard drainage improvements. That was invaluable to us. There's about a dozen businesses, we're right in the middle of all of them. And I can tell you that two or three weeks ago, when we had some of these big rains, we may have gone under again. And I just cannot tell you how much I appreciate the city doing that. It took, took a few years, but that's the way things work. I can't, thank you so much for getting that done. And I know I'm speaking behalf of all the businesses that use that road, and it looks like we're getting ready to be able to use it again shortly. But thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else on my left side of the room, your right side of the room, that would like to speak? Anyone on my right side, your left side? Anyone in the back? If not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to our policy agenda.
Ordinance to approve a PDR planned development residential master plan for Simon subdivision for property located at 4049 Lick Skillet Road.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr., if you'll just explain to us the process, just for the record, for those who fear that after this, they can just start building or whatever, and then if they don't build, what happens? Just for the record, for.
The, the process works almost exactly the same way that a new single-family subdivision would work, that needs a zoning change and a subdivision plat approved. It's a two-step process, and the first step is to bring forward the zoning change, or in this case, the PDR, which is the approval for the overlay district. PDR means Plan District Residential. And a PD is a provision in the ordinance that allows for a development that has more a PD is a provision in the ordinance that allows for a development that has more than one use in it, and is something that's probably going to be built in more than one phases. In this case, they're asking for PDR residential for a single-family development, and the two types of uses in there is at the corner, they're proposing townhomes, and then for the rest of the property, they're just proposing single-family houses. But the way that this would work is the first step is to bring the PDR forward, which is what they the applicant went to the planning commission with at the the last meeting, and it was approved by the planning commission, and it creates an overlay district. Now, the difference between this and a zoning change is that once you change the zoning on a piece of property, that zoning remains on that piece of property from then on unless somebody comes back in and requests it to change again. But with a PD overlay district, after two years, if there's no activity on the project, then the code charges me as the director with going back and having the overlay removed off of it, so it would revert back to the the use that was the district that was underneath already. That's the first step. That's what's before you today. If you vote on that, the only thing you've approved is the PDR. Now, what this does by approving this, it would allow the engineer to go back and conduct an engineering study of this property, something that's never been done on this property, to determine where the problems are and what the possible solutions are there. You know, where can we put detention areas, you know, that could catch a lot of this water that's that's coming in? And and we need that on any subdivision in order for them to put together the subdivision plat, which would be the the next step coming forward. So if you vote to approve this today, that would free up Stifel and associates to go ahead and conduct that extensive study of the engineering for the drainage and the other problems that are in there. And sometimes we've seen it happen where even though a developer is not responsible for correcting problems on other property, adjacent properties, we've often seen that by correcting or designing for drainage on their property, they actually alleviate some of the problems on the surrounding properties. We've seen that happen before. But to get to your point, what would happen next if the city council approves this, is that when Dennis finishes the study, they would come back and make application for the preliminary subdivision plat on the on the property. And that would require another public hearing before the planning commission, where it would be advertised, and the neighbors would all be notified about what's going on. So there would be a public hearing over there before that then comes back to the city council again for the plat consideration. And then if the city council chose to, they could call for another public hearing on top of that one. But nothing here will happen by surprise. Everyone will be aware of what's going on. We advertise, we it's paper, we advertise with signs on the property, and we send out notices to all the neighbors that are within 250 feet of the subject property.
All right, I appreciate it. And once once we know exactly what they do plan to do, you know, we will schedule a a public hearing before the council. A lot of the residents have requested that, so we want to honor their request.
For the record, Mr. President, I just want to, one of the statements, if we approve this today, this is a first reading, there's nothing going to be approved.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Question, Mr. Krill. They have that flood bypass that was discussed at the Planning Commission hearing that goes under Highway 67 as to how well it functioned. And I think the consensus was it doesn't function at all. Would this be included in that study to some degree? I don't know if you can answer that. I just know that was a a big concern, and I'm not quite sure how it fits in. So maybe it's included, maybe it's not. I was okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from LB Limited Business to Neighborhood Business for property located at 334 Howard Avenue.
Originally, this was made by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tisdale.
This is strictly a zoning change, so it could go into a neighborhood business where they could put a warehouse on this piece of land. So you're going to have two resolutions back to back concerning with the same piece of property. And that's what they're going to do. They're going to extend their warehouses and put them across the street on the other side of Hoxsey. So both of these match up together. So just just approving that for them.
Mr. Tisdale, any-
I have nothing to add to that. Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Six to zero. Mr. Deming out of the room.
Point of order, quick question. Did we move and move that first one, A? Was it moved in second?
We had a first and a second, yes, sir.
I think I missed that somehow.
That's okay.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a storage facility for the property located at 326 Howard Avenue.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
This will be approved, that this can be a condition use where they could build a warehouse on a piece of property. They go, both of them go together.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Six to zero. Mr. Deming out of the room.
Resolution appointing Shirley Robinson Ward Two representative to the Biloxi Tree Committee.
Second. We have a first by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Lawrence. Discussion?
No discussion. Good person.
All in favor? Six to zero.
Resolution appointing Susan Peterson Ward Four representative to the Biloxi Tree Committee.
Second. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Glavine. All in favor? Now move to the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. We have any discussion?
Yes, we do. We have something to do here extremely important on K, like in kickoff. What is designed for K? Mike Leonard, what you going to use for K? You always have a code, you. No code? The Marine code for K is what? The word?
Oh, kilo.
Okay. I knew you always had one of them words in your head there. This is extremely important. This is approving the putting bathrooms on the pickleball court. The only problem was there was no listing where it was funded. I know we had applied $75,000 to fund this. So I'm requesting that we put the $75,000 in there and have this done. To have the bathroom done, because this is probably the hottest thing we have for changes going on right now. If y'all need to ask any questions, we can ask Tom to come up and talk about it. But I think it should be funded and done immediately. We already told the people we're going to do it. Fofo said he agreed. He was he was willing to back them, and I think it should be funded and done now.
Well, I have no problem with doing it. We want to do it the right way, because we're talking about expansion of the of the situation. We're not, there's going to be there, but we want to make sure it's done with the future in mind, especially the one in Pops Ferry.
So that's why I just figured we take the $75,000, put it in there, what we said we was going to do. So let's do that and just take it out of the general fund. So that's the right way to do it, and get it on the table and get it done. I'm asking my colleagues to, they want to vote on this separate, then we'll vote on it separate.
Project, that's right.
I mean.
May I?
Go ahead.
Mr. Ray, may I?
Yeah.
We have a we have a long-term plan for that, and right now we're developing the entire plan. And so prefunding it might be premature. We we need to figure out how we're doing the entire expansion, and then I think we can fund it. I don't think we're ready to put shovels to dirt just yet. This is just the beginning phase of of the entire project.
These numbers came from doing the bathrooms. I didn't make this number up. This is the $75,000 they said it would take to fix the bathroom.
This isn't about fixing a bathroom. This is about establishing a permanent bathroom.
Bathroom, correct.
Right. But we have to get the plans for the entire thing put together, so we can make sure that it works, it weaves well.
And I would like, then I would like to start with $75,000. More than that, then pretty more money. But I like to get the thing done. These people are ready to have this done.
But I think we, Councilman Deming, was saying, we're in a plan of a design mode of needs assessment, not only for right now, but for, you know, the the couple of hundred folks, you know, more that we can handle in the long haul. So that's where we're coming from. I'm not, you know, hung up on $76,000. I'm not hung up on $150,000 if it makes sense. So what we want to do is put the thing up the right way, say we won't have to rebuild it. And if we expand the court, we won't have to do additional things that may cost us. I mean, just give us a little time. Our last meeting was a month or so ago, and we had some preliminary designs where we were asked to move it out a little bit further into, you know, what we might want to do in in an expansion mode.
Any idea on when we might-
My key is to put this thing in motion now. That's that's my key. I know we got plans here. All right, this thing is growing, probably faster than anything in the city of Bucks. And it's time for us to catch up with them and get this stuff done. You know that well as I do. And we close this national tournament for this, but it says that these people come in town and spend a ton of money.
You know, if you want to make a budget amendment, add $75,000, but we may come back and add another $75,000. But right now, we're not going to do anything till we design the thing.
You know, but I mean, it's just time, you know. We sit here and plan, 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 plan. This stuff is on the table. This is something we need to do.
It's not on the table. It's not. It's not on the table.
It's done, period.
Okay.
Is this a good time to say Hiller Park needs some new restrooms, too?
That's part of the plan. That's part of the plan.
I have a question about the plan.
What plan?
Plan to get Pelicans to land on Forest Avenue Pier. So do any idea when the the comprehensive plan that y'all are working on, I would assume it's going to be a number of weeks, couple of months or whatever?
Yeah, we've already got preliminaries, but I think we've got to nail down a lot more specifics. Lots to do with with utilities, availability. The apparatus is much more than just putting money into a capital project, but it's in motion. Thomas here, and he's he's put together a lot of the preliminaries, and he can tell you more about the whole the whole vision.
So it'll be so it'll be coming to the council soon.
It will be.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're going to do, what you, what kind of plan you already got started, you? I mean, what you have going? So we can tell the people we have something in motion.
Tom, if you want to tell them what the, give them a better idea of the scope of what we're talking about doing.
Well, what we're hoping to do is we're working with the administration on developing a project using Gulf Coast Restoration Funds. And the whole emphasis of the project is increase the capacity from the 12 outdoor courts we have to 24 courts. And with this, we can attract some large tournaments, up to maybe 680 players. And we're a regional area. And actually, the mayor thinks we might be able to make it a national area. Pickball is a very fast-growing sport, and we've got a lot of tourists this year already come and join us. So in that plan is a restroom. And in that plan is some additional parking, because the Pops Ferry Recreation Complex, the whole area, needs more parking. If you go out there on a Saturday, cars are parked all over in the grass and everything else, because there's a lot of soccer going on, a lot of other things. And so what, we don't know if we're going to get that Gulf Coast Restoration Funds. We can only submit a project, but we definitely know we need a restroom, because we've been using a porta potty for over two and a half years. And we have a lot of folks out there playing, and it's not the best accommodation for a lot of our specific hour ladies, I'll be honest with you, okay? And so that's one of the reasons why we've asked maybe to have the restroom in advance, even though it's going to be part of the overall plan. Because when we do the overall plan, we're going to have to come up with matching funds. You know, the overall plan could look to be up to the neighborhood of $2 million. And and matching funds would be almost $400,000, because the 20% requirement. So whether we can come up with that and get this thing moving, that's the big thing. We're not sure. But we do have a plan. We got a site plan. We provided it to the mayor. We've got a cost estimate. And that's about as far as, now, we're trying to get letters of endorsement from the casinos. We're getting to be very successful that way, saying it's a good idea. Matter of fact, I'm going to ask Councilman Glavine to help us with the Hotel Association, saying this is good, because it'll have a great economic impact on the community. So that's that's where we're at right now. So we're, we don't have design. We're not design-ready. It costs money to do design. We got to find out first if we get enough support, quite frankly, from the city and the county, to help put this project together.
Tom, I don't know if you, I've got a response, email-wise, on who won the, the, I guess, the dinner as a result of-
Oh, yeah. This is really wonderful.
I don't know if you know who Walkenfeld was. Did you?
The mayor, we had a very successful fundraiser. We we do have a nonprofit, Mississippi Gulf Coast Pickleball, which is really helps promote it throughout the whole county or the whole Gulf Coast. But the bottom line is, we had a wonderful raffle. The mayor was really great. He gave us a $200 gift certificate to the Mary Mahonies. And the folks that won it were from Livingston.
Louisiana.
Our neighbor, Louisiana. But that family, the wife, her great-grandparents settled here in, I can't remember their name. I'll get it. I gave it to the mayor.
Walkenfeld Pier, and bottom line, Walkenfeld family. That's what, she was descended of the Walkenfeld family, yeah.
And they they had beach houses. They had the first apartment in Biloxi, the apartment complex.
Sliding board, yeah. I don't know if you, many pictures of what they used to do.
We send that to the mayor, and they, the picture of the old house and everything else. So it was really a great one.
Really, we have some good pictures of the race that used to start from Walkenfeld Pier, the swimming to Ship Island and back. Georgia millions.
You probably remember that one. But that's that's where we're at.
I remember that.
Actually, question to Tom, are you, you want us to put up the bathrooms now?
Please do.
You want us to put up the bathrooms now?
Well, my personal feeling, if if we don't get this approved for the Gulf Coast Restoration, and it could be a tough project to get approved, we'll still be without a restroom for a number of years to come. We could build the restroom in compliance with what our plan is. And maybe we can convince the the congressional group that this is part of our matching funds. You know, we're we're started the project because of, this is my imagination, but because we, what we're trying to do is build one that would accommodate the larger crowd. And if we ever had a large tournaments, we might have to rent some additional restroom facilities. But that's, we did it for the Senior Olympics, and it worked real, real well. Matter of fact, Coastal Mississippi said, Mississippi Senior Olympics that we just had here, just pickleball, was almost $200,000 worth of economic impact because of the amount of people that came and spent the night. Over 52% of the participants were out of state. So this is this is our goal. We're hoping to do four big tournaments a year. Each one, it'd be at least a million-dollar impact, and we still get a lot of tourists. We're starting to get a reputation as being a pickleball destination.
I would, excuse me, Tom, I didn't mean to jump in front of you, but you know, within a couple of months, you know, eight weeks or so, we should have ready, you know, building with the engineering, doing what we need to do in-house, or if we got to go out. But we should be able to have a construction plan and rollout date.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject also? And one of the, one of the concerns that I have is what we talked about, spending the $75,000 and trying to apply it as matching funds down the road. We we need to get some consider, well, I would like to get some concrete answer on that before we spend $75,000, then find out it can't be used as matching funds, and we turn a $400,000 investment into a $475,000 investment. While that may seem like pennies in a in a larger bucket of $55 million budget, it's a lot of linear feat I can pave or anyone on this council can pave. You know, to to wait eight weeks, you know, or less than two months to find out if we can do it that way, I think is is more prudent.
So may I, may I say something, Mr. Lawrence, on your-
You'll get a bathroom, is what I'm trying to say with that.
I'd just like to say this, Tom. Thank you, you know, for for sharing, you know, your vision, and we want to turn it into a reality. I think Councilman Lawrence is, you know, his intentions are are great. There's a resolution on the council agenda today. Obviously, I don't see, I may be wrong, but I'm sure it's going to pass. But adding some additional verbiage that we would like to make sure there's a funding source in place, either directly or to be applied to matching funds, I think would meet what Councilman Lawrence is trying to achieve here, to make sure that if we don't get a project for some reason, unknown reason, at least we can pass a resolution saying that the council supports some some amount that is either directly or that goes toward matching funds for the overall all project. I don't think that would hurt.
We're establishing the project with the intent of doing it. I mean, like, you know, this is the intent of this resolution, is just say, this is a project. We'll come back with, you know, design and funding and and make it happen. My goal is- back with, you know, design and funding and make it happen. My goal is, you know, within an eight-week period, you'll see stuff happening. And then we'll ask for exact amounts, if it's more or less, but it'll be fitting, as Councilman Deming was saying, it'll be fitting in a plan, you know, with the things that you need to do, subsurface as well as on the surface.
And we can only ask if we could have that as matching. I don't know what the law states, you know.
Right, that's, we need clarification on that, I think. How do we get clarification on that? Is that a Peter question?
It's still in process.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, a lot of this, first time I've heard of any of this, so, yeah, I can take the lead on looking into that. But the matching for Gulf Coast Restoration, I mean, I don't know if that ship has already sailed or not. I mean, you'd be talking about for next year on that, right?
Next year.
So I mean, short-term solutions, we can look at that as part of it, I think. Or short-term, by short-term, I mean, within the next two months.
Right, so I think that, I think that we can, if we don't have something, we can have a contingent that if we don't have something in place within two months, we can move towards funding the project.
It's not my intent to wait on anybody else's project to handle what we needed to do and what we talked about in that meeting, to get a facility that made, you know, even more than what you asked for. But should things happen, you've got it in place.
Right. Thank you.
We do need a restroom. It's just, when we have visitors come and tourists come, they love it. They call it the picklepot and everything else, but it's not the best for showing our image of a city on the move. So I really appreciate it if we could get the bathroom.
All right. You have anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, that's just, my whole goal, that is just like Kenny said, to make sure we get it done. How we have to do it is fine. The faster we can do it, the better it is. We have to set up and fund it whatever later. I just want to make sure it's done, because it's a big thing in the city of Biloxi, and not just here, everywhere. This pickleball is just a big thing, period. So I just want to make sure we stay on top of it. And Fofa, you just keep coming backwards. Anytime you, next step you take, let us know what we got to do. Even you, you have to come back and talk to us. Better than every week when we here.
We'll do that.
All right. Yeah. They have one on F. They received the money for the, some of these parks, and they keep talking about a community garden. Is they putting playground equipment, or this is going to be just a garden itself? Is that how that work? I mean, you're talking about fifty thousand dollars. Hope it's more than just flowers.
Okay.
That's F.
Foxtrot.
Okay. I'm about to write all these down for you.
So what's the question?
What's the question? Fifty thousand is going to be spent on what? On a new park?
Not to exceed fifty thousand. And it's, you notice it's equipment valued at not the fifty thousand, not fifty thousand dollars in cash. It's donations of equipment valued at fifty thousand, which this group is going to give us. What we're asking you today is authorizing us to accept that donation.
That's what I'm saying. We're not going to turn that down, that's for sure. I'm just saying, what are they going to do with the money? It could be playground equipment, could be something else, or, I mean, all they say is a playground equipment.
And a community garden.
Yeah. And so we're going to turn half the park into a flower garden or something?
I can, if you'll give me an opportunity to come back, I can give you a deep.
That'd be fine.
This is the, this is, this is what we asked for, is the, we gave them the price of the equipment, and they wanted to do a garden, too, within no details about how much garden or what garden, or some three azalea plants or what. Don't know.
I mean, that's not a bad thing, spruce up the park one way or the other. I was just wondering how exactly that worked. That's a good thing. On the L, Peter, are you awake over to Peter?
Lima.
Yeah, L. What is it?
Lima.
I'm going to get me a sheet.
I'll teach them. Sooner or later, they're going to learn them all.
How much we doing, what are we doing here with the incentive program?
I think that's just extending the deadline. Let me see the actual. Yeah, this is the, one of the Jay Golden properties. I believe it's the one on Forest. And I believe that is almost complete. I think the CO is probably in progress, but I think we're just extending it because of the prior resolution, which was in December. And so we're extending it till, it went out in April, so we're just extending it two months to June. It's not a new grant. It's just an extension of two months for completion.
All right. And on you, we doing with the Johnson Diesel, we renting that property. We planning on building some units ourselves to house our own stuff that'll keep, I know this is something pretty quick, what they do right now.
Yeah. In order to enable the Boys and Girls Club to use that facility and put a decent, a great, you know, program together right then in the community, we had to figure out a place to store a number of PD and public works, equipments and supplies. So we were able to kind of engage, I think it was for two years, with a year option, but the chief and, long-term solution is to replace that with a building on some of our property that would, where it makes sense.
Do we have, as Robert Demings would say, a comprehensive plan to do that?
Yeah, we got a comprehensive plan. That's right, we sure do. You want to know what it is? No.
Just want to make sure y'all on top of these things, you know what I mean? The other one I know, Robert's favorite one, we're going to ask about the Sanger, what we did again with the Sanger.
The Sanger is.
This is a.
Let me take this, Mayor.
O.
All right. When we funded the original exterior project, which one?
O.
Oscar.
Okay.
When we funded the original Sanger exterior renovation, we funded a design that included three sides, two sides and a back. We did not include any work on the front of the building. We weren't sure that we had enough money to do all four sides, and that was where the least damage was. So that's the west or front side. Mayor's direction to us was to finish, finish the exterior completely before we started doing any new work in the interior. So to do that, we just need to, this is a change to the black line contract, the contractor's contract, so that we could, we're going to bring in the special historical architectural people. They're going to give us some advice. We'll get the MDAH people to approve the additional work, and we're going to finish the exterior on the front, which means new doors.
Well, we don't know that the brick, you know, the whole outs, you know, the other three walls, was to re-point the brick. They're going to, part of this ball, part of this resolution is to figure out whether we have to do that on that west side or the entrance. There are some things, as far as the overhang and those, as Mike said, the entrance and the facade in the entrance, that's, you know, will complete the whole exterior. Part of what has already been done is to remove some of the things on the interior, so that we have a prospective management company come in and evaluate what would have to be done in order to bring it to a different level. So that's already been done. It's already part of the exterior, but it really was on the interior, to remove some of the things that were, you know, crumbling, and that would have to be done anyhow. They removed a lot of it to examine whether the pointing of the brick worked as far as leaks. It unveiled a lot of potential, a lot of things that could be done, once that is open to be reviewed. So that whole will be a shell open for somebody's evaluation in order to say, yeah, this is what we envisioned, you know, idea by idea. But this will be completing the exterior. May not have to be the brick that we, you know, the amount of expense that we did on the, actually chipping away those things. So we're hopeful that, you know, it will not reveal a lot that we have to do, other than cosmetic in the redoing of that entrance.
The last thing, I and J, what did the master plan we trying to develop on I and J? I and J, where does that one end? Mike?
Okay. India and Juliet. Are we learning? Aren't we learning, Mr. Lawrence? Okay, we talked about, it was this council that asked us not too long ago, do we have a plan for West Biloxi? The mayor has more than once talked about the fact that we've got new infrastructure in East Biloxi now. We've got a lot of new infrastructure north of the bay that's not that old. We're putting a lot of new stuff into Wool Market.
We've got Wool Market Master Plan that we're using.
And we have a Wool Market Master Plan that tells us exactly what else needs to be done. Where we were flying blind, and essentially in breakdown maintenance mode, is in West Biloxi, where is now the oldest infrastructure in the city is in West Biloxi. So the purpose of this is to develop a plan in short order. They've got a five-month period of performance to develop a master plan with a list of projects that are all priced out, that we can walk down the list and order off of, if we do get some federal funding.
Be as close to shovel ready as we can with the, these are the things we're asking you to do from the, you know, the trillion infrastructure, water sewers primarily, and maybe some drain.
I'll leave the rest to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines?
I think George covered almost all of them except.
Let's re-cover.
I think he covered all the way to double Z, didn't he? Nothing. Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming?
Yeah, just want to circle back on this West Biloxi master plan. Now, the majority of my ward is, I don't know, I guess people considered it North Biloxi, because it was over the bridge. I consider it West Biloxi. And the age of those communities are very similar to the age of the Bay Vista area. Do we have, what are we looking at for a master plan for that area? We see tons of crumbling.
It would be the rest of Biloxi, is what we're trying to do.
Well, that, the parameters of that.
Right. Right now, right now, the study area, as it's currently described in a scope work, is from White Avenue to De Bees and from the beach.
So that's.
The back bay. So it doesn't take into account the area of Ward Four across the bay, which is, which is, as you point out, in some cases, it's almost as old as Bay Vista.
Right.
So, so I mean, if I'm following your drift, you're thinking maybe the scope of the project should be expanded to include the rest of Ward Four.
Or another project.
Or another project.
And six.
I would like to get a timeline on that.
And six.
We have no problem with that. I mean, you know, we're just trying to examine, you know, we're hopefully finishing with the three-hundred-and-forty-four million. That leaves, you know, a lot of things to go and have a brand-new deal before it's over with. Yeah.
The underground, our infrastructure in the part of Ward Four, south of the bay, is in dreadful shape. Bay Vista, we found that with Tanglewood last year, where we spent a million dollars to do a half a neighborhood, and that was only the water and not the sewer.
That's right, now.
And Bay Vista.
I would love to have one of you jump in the car with me and drive through those older neighborhoods in Ward Four, where we've neglected to address range, because it's going to be part of a master plan. We don't want to spend half a million dollars, a million dollars on a few houses, when we know we have to come through and redo the entire area. We have sinkholes everywhere, because the failing pipes under the ground are collapsing, instead of the older pipes. We did the paving study, and it demonstrated that some of the oldest and most in-need streets are, in fact, in Ward Four. And some of these roads that are inhabited and used every day are down to dirt. I'll give you a call maybe one day, come out there and, you know, with at least a short-term plan to address some of these needs, if we're not going to look at a short-term comprehensive plan.
Not a problem.
Let's see. Oh, the issue with the Sanger Theater. In my understanding.
No issue with the Sanger Theater.
What's that?
There's no issue with the Sanger Theater. We have the budget to do that.
I get that. My question is, the eighty thousand that we're spending is just to determine if we have to spend more money, right?
That's right. And that's all part of the budget. We have.
It has to be inspected by historical.
Yeah, well, it has to be, but I'm saying, that eighty thousand is within the budget to study that, that we already have. We're not asking for any hit to the budget. Should it reveal, what was it, the original, the total figure? We've got four million left to complete the exterior. So.
I just.
Just part of the plan.
Thank you.
Danger, the danger always of these historical properties is that anything we do to the exterior, the MDAH people in Jackson have to give it their thumbs up, which means we have to bring in a consultant to tell us what needs to be done to the canopy, for example, to the fancy sign, to the gargoyles up on the roof.
You're preaching to the choir. It's just more money going out of the wallet.
It's not more money. It's not more money. It's part of the plan.
I know. I'm going to give you a hard time, because, you know, I fought so hard on how we spend this money. Nathan, Mr. Barrett, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, are you?
Yeah, just one, I forgot to ask about the Coon Street Pier. We increased it at ninety-six thousand for what?
That's the design.
Design of the expansion of the wall.
And what is it?
Of the, of the project, which is, had been, has been, as you know, the, the conference committee gave us only half of what we asked for. So we have to decide whether we're going to parking lot or boat ramp first, and we'll go back to the well again next year to get the rest of the money. So this is Pickering Companies, the A and E firm that's assigned to this project. This is their design contract, to design the parking lot and.
Expansion of the boat ramp.
And the expansion of the boat ramps. It includes permitting.
I just wanted to know.
Well, I'll jump right in there in this pregnant pause. So going back to the Sanger. You're talking two sums of money, twenty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand. From what you said, Mr. Mayor, this is not new money. It's money already.
Exactly.
Already designated for this project. Basically, we're moving money within that contract?
Approving an agreement takes.
Not moving any money.
No money is being moved.
I'm sorry.
Nope. No money is being moved. It's already part of the project. It's just an expansion of the services, so we can assess that last wall and the condition of the entranceway.
That's what the twenty-five thousand is for. The fifty-five thousand is in the event that we need some historic consulting.
Yeah.
Based on what that is to do the repairs that the consultant says we have to do. But we don't know what those repairs are yet.
Right, and that'll be a new.
Dale Partners' estimate of what they think we're going to be told to do.
Right, and if some new work is discovered, then that's going to be a new number.
Right. But the total overall for the project, the exterior project, we're sitting at about four hundred thousand left. Isn't that right? After paying everything?
Right, that's, so.
For the exterior.
All right, so there's a contingency amount in there for these kinds of things.
Well, it's part, it's part of the plan to look at that last wall. The initial thing was to re-point the three sides of the brick and repair an unforeseen fly tower. So that was about nine-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to repair that sixty-foot fly tower in the back. So that was part of the original.
Five million, I think.
But, you know, otherwise, we'd have had that money left it to go forward.
Right.
The money's, you know, the budget is there. We're not asking, we're just approving this agreement to assess the situation and to repair it if we have to.
Right.
Up to fifty thousand. It may cost more than that.
Still working off the original grant.
That's it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, understand.
Still working off the original grant.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. I'm done.
That's it, Mr. Glavine?
God, I'm done.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about P as it relates to the Cedar Lake Bridge, the D-Scope, and then the related resolution that's entering into a new contract or an addendum to the contract.
Okay, let me, let me take P and Q together.
Okay.
Back in 2015, the city entered into a contract with.
Thompson.
Thompson Engineering to assess and design changes to the bridge to allow it to operate. During that time, since 2015, we've not been able to drive a fire truck across that bridge, because it's no longer rated for that, for that weight. And also, we've got mechanical electrical issues where, you know, we can't always be sure that the bridge is going to open when we hit the open button. So they were, they were engaged. They worked for a while, and we, not, we gave them a stop work. They worked for a while and we, not, we gave them a stop work order at some point, and in 2019, they came back with a revised price to finish the work. The, the city was not happy with that price and set it aside. Since then, in my, in my time, in my part-time job down at engineering, I looked at that contract and I, I called Thompson Engineering and said, what would you guys take? What's the price to finish your job? To which they gave us a, a new price, not very different from the 2019 price. So we went to MDOT and said, okay, we got the contractor ready to go again, and MDOT basically said we had to kind of start from scratch with the LPA process, as they call it. So we're going through that, but in the meantime, we had some money left in the old contract. So what we're doing today is we're terminating the old contract, allowing us to move the residual dollars out of that contract into the new contract that we're executing today. And then we'll turn them loose. Now, what comes out at the other end after this design is finished as a project to fix the mechanical and electrical systems in that bridge? Not unlike some of the work that just went on for the Fort Bayou Bridge. It's just, it's just repairs to the existing bridge. It doesn't solve our problem. It just gets, it's a bridge that we can depend on opening when we hit the open button. So that's what we're doing today. Now, in parallel, as you point out, it would probably be useful if the city were to initiate a capital project for a new Cedar Lake Bridge and at least make it, make the, the MDOT people aware that, that that's, you know, that's our long-term direction. This, these two actions, those two resolutions don't, don't solve that problem. All they do is get us a design to award a contract to fix the bridge so that it's more reliable.
Okay. So, so just to summarize, it would fix the bridge, it would allow it to open for boat traffic, and it would fortify it enough that it would allow emergency vehicles to at least go over it if it's fortified to a certain standard.
That's, that's what we, that's what would be the outcome of these actions.
Okay.
Will give us a new bridge. I think that's got to be a parallel issue.
I totally agree. I'd like to ask the chief, so chief, you've seen the flooding on both sides, so if there's an emergency, do you allow, even if it's fortified, do you allow emergency vehicles to trudge through any flooding that occurs on both sides of that bridge?
Not a question of how. Question of being able to make it through high water.
Okay. So as I reiterated my earlier statements earlier in this meeting, it's great that we're going to fortify the bridge and dry weather, we, we could go over it, I think. Are we going to be able to go over that bridge if we fortify it, chief?
That's a question that I think the engineers will have. I think that's a big question. I don't know that, I can't answer that, the engineers have to.
That's why they're, we're hiring them.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, listen, I, I really applaud you. I'm glad we're restarting that, that engineering project to fortify the bridge and get it functional. I mean, that's really important for the citizens that pay tax dollars to, to use that bridge. But the long-term solution is to get this on a capital list, and if we do have significant infrastructure money coming down, and we're doing these master plans, or even if it's outside of the master plan, this needs to be, be a priority.
When, when I mentioned LPA and MDOT, that, that's, if you will, the hint that it's an 80/20 project, by the way, this, this project, meaning we're a 20% funding local source, 80% MDOT.
I mean, time, I mean, if you have to go around to respond to an emergency, either going north or going south, those minutes, or however long, could be critical in either saving property or more importantly, saving lives. And so I, I hope we can figure it out, you know, fairly quickly. That's all I have.
I have a question, what Kenny was talking about, the 300,000, we getting from MDOT, the 100,000, we putting up?
20%.
80/20.
I mean, according to the data, it says 300,000. We plugged it at 100,000.
Brother Placidus taught you math, right? So 80/20.
Well, nobody says this, it says 300,000, we plugged a match of 100,000 plus 18,150. So we putting up 100,000? I mean, that's what it says, we plugged math of 100,000. That's not, that's not, that's not 80/20.
Sources could come from county, correct, state.
We could ask the county to pile on.
Right. Okay, and there could be some additional sources that we don't, we haven't figured it out yet, but I, I know State Representative Zubor is interested. I know Delbert, Lieutenant Governor Housman, he was interested. He likes the idea of a, a smaller bridge project. You know, he, he really reiterated that as well, and I think we could map out the funding sources with what all is coming down and, and the interest that, that we have on this, this particular bridge.
What you're, what you've said in all this time, Councilman, is we don't get it if we don't ask for it. Right now, we're not asking, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, just two quick questions. On the Jim Burd Water Extension, the 300,000, what area is that? It says it's going to bring on 75 new residents.
Now, that's a project that came right out of the Wool Market Master Plan. It's setting the project up, but we're not, it's just not funding the project at this point.
Okay.
And it, it really is from the beginning of Jim Burd, it's the whole entire length of Jim Burd.
Okay, so basically to the city limits?
The city limits.
Okay, so we're setting that up, and then.
If you think about it, the, the, the job that Dennis Stiefel is no longer here, but that he's working is the design of the water and sewer upshriners to the preserve. This would be parallel that of Jim Burd and sort of going the back door.
Run legs off of it onto those side streets.
It's a loop.
Okay. Good deal. And then the other question is, the G, the Eagle Point Pavilion for the Eagle Point Park, that is, is that to build out one of the pavilions that we poured the slab for, right there next to the pickleball court?
I was, I was going to suggest that Councilman Barrett brief us on status, since he drives by that every day. He, I think he knows more about the status.
Well, the, the pickleball court is poured. I think they're about halfway done. In between rain, they're pouring the basketball court. I think it's about halfway done. Outside of that, they have everything else.
Pavilion's been priced and is being ordered.
Yes, and those are, it hasn't been poured yet. We have two pavilions and then the two playgrounds for the different ages, and I don't know if that equipment's been ordered yet or not. I know that Sherry has her wish list on that.
Do you want restrooms?
No, we're going to do, for now, we're doing portal. It's the restrooms because it's in a flood zone. It's just too big of a cost right now, but.
I appreciate your report.
The one thing is, we, we have to get that, those silt fences and that stuff out of the ditches. I mean, the grass is six or seven foot tall in those ditches right along Penn Oak Mill. And with it being summer right by the water in a park, I mean, that's going to bring snakes and stuff, so as soon as possible. And I don't know if that's our responsibility or the contractors that did the original work there, but the silt fence is all still there. They still have those yellow devices in the canal there to catch the runoff, and the grass is just extremely tall along the road there, so that's it. But other than that, everything's coming along nicely. And that's all I have. So I guess I'll call for the question on the consent agenda. All in favor? Any exceptions? 5-0 with Mr. Guines and Mr. Glavine out of the room? No exceptions?
BB.
Huh?
BB.
BB?
Yeah.
Boy, boy?
Boy, boy.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence isn't, BB, he's against. All right. Mr. Creel will now move to the code enforcement hearing.
Item A, Samir and Malik Baroudi, 1589, no court. This property is still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Samir and Malik Baroudi at 1589, no court? Okay, if you will come, if you will come forward, sign in and speak your name into the microphone for the record.
My name is Hassan Malik.
So you can, you can address us, just tell us your plans to.
Oh, okay. I've got a question here for the landfill. I've talked to the engineering. They said somebody was going to approve it, but he was out for two weeks. Lady named Courtney told me she'll get back with me, talk to maybe Mary and Community Development and give us approval, or maybe they could give us approval, or we have to wait for the person to come back and give us approval. Also have, that's the application that we wrote him with the plan, and then this is a copy of the application, and that's the contractor for everything that we need to do. We have a code and he's, he's starting on it. So that's the plan. Samir was, Baroudi, he, he was going to try to do this, but the problem is he was not finding anybody to do it. But now I'm going to take charge of it, and I'm going to get it done. I was kind of, he's, he's busy taking care, he's a cardiologist, so he was busy taking care of his, you know, during the COVID, he was really busy, so he couldn't do it. And I was taking care of my wife, so, but now she's fine, she was having some heart issues, so I'm going to take care of it, and.
How many days would you need?
I think three to four weeks should be.
I'll move for a 30-day extension.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
They said that he might be out for two weeks, so he might not get a permit to do the landfill, so I'm not sure, maybe six weeks?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion for a 30-day extension and a second. All in favor?
Got it.
7-0. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he might need, I think he might need 40s.
Item B, Heather B. Freo, 866 Brentwood Drive. This property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Heather B. Freo at Brentwood Drive? All right, if not, this case is closed.
Item C, Cynthia S. Joakim, 121 Hopkins Boulevard. This property's still in violation.
All right, anyone here to speak on behalf or against Cynthia Joakim, 121 Hopkins Boulevard? If you will, please sign in and state your name for the record.
Cynthia Joakim. I've been here on more than one occasion with this house. I do, again, want to thank the city for the consideration that they have given me. I'm like every other seller of property that needs to be sold. I've been caught up with every developer that's come in and wants to do a project with the beach properties, including my property. Nothing has happened. Those lots that are sitting on front beach from Howard, from Hopkins Boulevard to Seal Avenue have been vacant since Katrina. My house survived Katrina. The other ones did not. And the bottom line is, I've tried, I've worked with every developer that's come in, and you see that there's no project done yet. So that's what I've been hanging my hat on, was getting some kind of a project done that, that would be, my, probably would be included. That's no excuse for the way that it looks, but the damage from the fire with my tenant in there was extensive. I've spent a lot of money on still trying to clean up. I've done everything from even calling the air conditioning companies. There were three new air conditions put in, in the property after Katrina to the tune of about $27,000. Two of the units will never return to rental, and, you know, the, the air conditioning people asked them, come out and remove them, and, and they said, they don't need to be removed, they've never been used, and, you know, perhaps someone can use them. So I've, I've continued to seek advice about what to do with, with the situation. I do have a buyer for the property now. I also have a contractor who was introduced to me who specializes in old houses. I have a bid from him to repair the work, not to somebody's necessarily liking, but to get a new roof on and to finish out the interior for the apartment that was burned so badly. And so those are my two options that are left, and I'm respectfully asking for just a little bit more time to either sell the property to an active buyer that I do have, have not met yet, but working with his real estate agent, or to consider on my own end of taking the contractor's bid that he's given me to repair the upstairs apartment. And I respectfully ask for more time.
What, I know you said you've been dealing with different people. What are you planning on doing, like closing it up?
Well.
And open for a few.
Mr. Lawrence, you know, it was closed up with, with boards after the fire, and the city asked me to take it down because somebody complained about the boards. I would love to be able, I've talked to people about putting in their Plexiglas that they can put in, so that, that's as far as I've gotten with it. I'd love to close it up, but y'all won't put up with boarding because I took the boards down. But I've met with at least two contractors that can do a Plexiglas on the windows. Now, the roof is another issue, but I did talk to Jay O'Collins. Jay O'Collins's grandfather built the house for my grandfather. The house is almost 100 years old, and I've talked to the Collins about it, and they think that there's some kind of, something that they can put across the top of it. They didn't say it would necessarily suit y'all, but that it's, they could do something with it there, so I, I'm working with a contractor, like I said, who specializes in redoing old houses. He's not from here. He's from Alabama, but he's already contacted a local, local contractor that he knows who will, who will pull the permits for the property. I'd love to be able to do something temporary with that until I can, until it gets sold or I decide to go through with the renovations, so I, like I said, I'd love to get it up, but I don't seem to have a prop, I don't seem to have anything that may with your approval. Like I said, the last contractor that looked at it offered me an opportunity to do something with Plexiglas, and if y'all would put up with that, I can, I could get him to come back and try to work on that.
Well, the biggest problem with a lot of the neighbors, they, they don't want the house tore down.
That what, sir?
They don't want the house tore down and rather see you repaired or fix it up, but they don't want it open like that either.
I know, I understand, sir.
And why do we have them, you take down the boards? You said you hadn't made it take down the boards, Jerry? So what happened, I mean?
I'm not aware of that. That's it. We've actually, we've tried to get it sealed up, the roof and the wall sealed up so the water wouldn't stop going into it. I'm not sure where that came from, but that's first I've heard of that.
I was told that one of the commercial neighbors on the street complained about the condition of the property, and I was told by someone from the city to take the boards down.
A quick question. How, how long, how much time will you need to have it properly closed up?
Well, the agent who has brought the buyer to the property knows that I'm here, and I asked him specifically today how quickly he could close, and he indicated 30 to 60 days.
30 days.
All right, well, we're going to give you a shot. One more shot, that's it.
We're going to be plenty appreciative.
30 days, and we'll just hold everything open, Jerry, and let's see what happens from there. You know, we could like to see, nobody wants the house tore down.
I don't either.
I know, and I mean, if you can move it or fix it up solid, you got 30 days, you're on the carpet.
All right.
Your time's up, like the NFL says, you're on the clock.
Got a motion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, it is.
I'll second it. All right, all in favor?
Can we discuss it before we vote?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Creel, and, and Mr. Joakim, I'm sorry, I want to understand the situation fully. Now, the house has been, how long has it been, how long has the envelope been open? I know it's been, it's been damaged since Katrina, but how long?
No, sir, it wasn't. The fire, there was a fire in the house, Mr. Demme. The fire in the house was about three years ago, the fire. The house was damaged in Katrina, but I had a new roof. The fire, the house was damaged in Katrina, but I had a new roof put on it for $30,000. I had three new air conditioners put in for about $30,000. I had 62 new windows put into the tune of $27,000. So the house was still standing. And so those are all the repairs that I had done, both under my insurance and personal funds. So it did not look like this in Katrina. That's why I still had a tenant in there. He's the one that got liquored up on New Year's Eve and almost burnt the house down. Didn't know how to use an air, central heat and air conditioning and had a space heater in there. And thank goodness to the Biloxi Fire Department, they were able to save the house.
You said we've given you numerous opportunities and numerous extensions in the past.
I'm sorry, what?
Mentioned that we've given you numerous opportunities in the past. How many have we given you?
I don't know.
Mr. Creel?
I like Mr. Creel.
Many, many extensions on this piece of property. We've actually taken it to AHRC, and we didn't think AHRC would approve it being demolished, but actually they did.
At the second hearing, they did. The first one, they did not. And one of the things that was suggested, and I worked very closely with Mr. Raymond, the house is eligible for a grant. But the problem with the grant, there are very strict requirements for the grant. I could not do anything with selling the house or anything after the grant was given. And if it means taking a grant to save the house, I'm prepared to do that too now. Because Mr. Rayman said that it's eligible for a grant, and I can get it. And the grant money would be enough to put a roof on and close up the windows.
Mr. Joakim, my concern is it's been three years and numerous opportunities. If we were to approve this today, what would the timeline be for her to address the issues before any action was actually taken?
If you approve this today, it would take 60 days at least for us to get bids. So that would give her time to negotiate whatever deal she's going to negotiate with this builder. If someone comes in with a proposal to restore the house, we would work with them to do that. We've had a number of people who made offers on this property. A number of them have called me, and Mr. Joakim has told me about several of them, but something always seems to happen, you know, whenever it gets close to closing, it happens. So, you know, we're kind of here because we've been forced to be here today.
So the old definition of insanity, right, is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome?
No, Mr. Demme, I don't think so. And I certainly understand the position that you're coming from. I'm in the real estate business. I grew up in it. Six generations here have been, of us have been in the real estate business. But the problem is, is like every other, you know, seller that goes through this, that his property, I've talked to everybody that's called me about this property. I've waited for people to write the contracts, you know, in good faith, I've done everything. And even the last gentleman that came to see, Mr. Creel, tie, he did an incredible amount of work. He pulled off the old boards. And let me give an example, the boards that are laying in the yard now, I've asked the people that I have already paid good money to, not once, not twice, but about four times, to get over there and finish picking up the logs that the contractor a month ago that Mr. Creel met was to take them down. So I've tried my hardest, sort of getting out there and doing some of the things myself, and I do plenty in the inside myself. So please don't misunderstand me that I'm trying to just take another shot at trying to get something done and get you all, you know, leaving me alone. That's not it at all. I'm prepared to tear the house down, which is the last thing that I want to do with this property. But I know that my time has run out with y'all. People will tell you, Mr. Creel will tell you, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Mr. Leonard. I'm grateful what the city has done for me. I'm grateful. But I know I'm out of time, and I still have another shot at it. I've still got, and like I said, not one thing has been done on Front Beach from Hopkins Boulevard to Seal Avenue since Katrina. Those houses have been gone since Katrina. And I've talked to the developers. I've brought some to the beach properties myself. Had a gentleman last, about a month ago, that was going to build all new houses. He was going to buy everything up from Howard, Hopkins Boulevard on Front Beach to Seal Avenue. I talked to just about every owner there or broker there who might have a property to sell. So I've tried everything to get somebody there. So if something were sitting on Front Beach and I was still there, I could certainly understand, maybe you're questioning about what my intentions are. But everything, I've talked to everybody that I could talk to that's come to talk to the owners about the property, including my own property. And like I said, and even when this other agent contacted me, other than the fact that I've known his family for many, many, many years, it's like ho-hum, here's somebody else that thinks they want to do something. But again, I reached out to him. He knows I'm here today, and he indicated to me that his prospect could close quickly. And I'd rather sell my family property than have it torn down.
Mr. Joakim, I appreciate all of that. And I'll be honest, I would prefer to give you a hard and fast deadline to ensure that it gets done. I think the council has made a motion and a second to approve more time. I hope that you take this more diligently than the last.
I make no mistake, ladies and gentlemen, I know I'm on the last journey with it, and I'm going to do everything I can to either save it or I'll demolish it. I already have a bid from J. O. Collins on it. They will do the work. They will do my demolition. And as I told Mr. Creel one day, it may be, probably may be very fitting, the family that built it, for the family, will take it down.
We're trying to give you more time, sir. We try not to demolish it. You can't replace houses like that. We're trying to hope that you step up and do something right so we can keep the house and do what you have to do.
I want to see it. I want to see it there, too. Thank you so very much for your consideration.
So we have a first for Mr. Lawrence, a second for Mr. Tisdale. All in favor?
Opposed.
So 6-4, 1 against Mr. Demme. All right, next case, please. Thank you, Ms. Joakim.
Item D, Darrell Sosha Estate, 2026 Greater Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item E, Sam Jones, 170 Hannibal Court. That case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. Now move to our routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
The mood.
Second.
Who was the second from? Sorry. Okay, we have a first from Mr. Lawrence, a second from Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
Who got the nickel this week? Walt?
Yeah, okay. I might see if there won't be this.
I make some...
Afternoon, counsel. So two Wednesdays ago, the city received 3.19 million. We have another 1.44 million coming from MEMA, should be here this week. And right behind that, within a couple of weeks, we should have another 1.76 million for theme-related infrastructure work from Hurricane Katrina.
That's what you need.
About, yeah, it's well over 6.39 billion.
We'll take that 6.3.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? 7-0. Do I have them?
I'll move that we close in the memory of Richard Galott.
We'll all second that.
We'll all second. All in favor?